I'd like to call the meeting to order for March 18th, 2021 as district clerk. Can we start with the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have a motion for a chair?
I'd like to make a motion for Don Dutton to be chair.
Second.
Discussion or could we have a vote on that, please? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed? Okay.
Get out of here.
Come on up.
Oh, wow. That's pretty fancy, isn't it?
It's hard to tell when Pete's kidding or not.
I couldn't tell. I wasn't sure if he was joking or being serious.
Allow me to carry that, why you madam chairman.
Oh, stop. I'll leave it. I can get it later.
Hey, make a point as funny as I can, you know?
Did you jump rope with the girls?
No, with my back. I would like to make a motion. I would like to nominate Jim Baker vice chairman.
Second. Any discussion? Oh, thank you. All right, vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Congratulations. Okay. See if I can do this right without too many mistakes. Okay, so we are on to agenda number three.
Point of order, Madam Chairman?
Yes.
I think there are a couple of other officers.
Yes. Um, yes, you're right there. So we need to discuss the treasurer and also.
You.
Thank you.
They're fixed.
Yeah, those are, yes.
Yes, um, when we negotiated Phyllis's contract, we included that role in her salary. So she's all set. So I don't know, Phyllis, I meant to ask you today, do we need to nominate you and?
Okay.
Who's the other gentleman? I'm sorry. Ron Brickett, thank you. I wanted to say Rick Edelman. I don't know why, but that's the wrong guy. So Ron Brickett is our treasurer. He does some finance work for us. And so we would need the board to make a motion to nominate Phyllis and Ron.
I'll make a motion to.
I beat you.
Oh, you did. Go ahead. Go for it.
I just did. Move to nominate.
Okay. Second.
There we go.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Any opposed? All right, congratulations, Phil. Congratulations.
You need Ron Brickett too?
I mentioned both people and then Tammy nominated.
Move to nominate the whole slate.
Yes.
Here we go.
Perfect.
Well, we better do it just to have it in the minutes that I'm gonna nominate Ron Brickett.
Okay.
Okay, fine.
Uh, second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? All right, congratulations, Ron. Okay, now moving on to agenda item number three, action on the minutes from March 3rd of 2021.
Move to approve as written.
Second.
Any discussion?
Well, I have a question.
Okay.
So yeah?
Yeah.
Do I abstain from that since I wasn't here?
Yes.
When you vote, I'll just.
Thanks for asking.
Okay, all in favor? All, any opposed? Any abstentions? And I'm going to abstain as well because I was not here.
Thank you.
Okay, communications.
Sorry.
So manifest documents are making their way around. Nominations, I didn't see any. Do you have any?
No nominations this evening, thank you.
Um, and what about resignations?
We have one resignation. It's Kimberly Conan.
Okay.
Has accepted an administrative position in another district and I have to say myself personally, this is very rare, but I accept this nomination with regrets. But I also 100% support her in her career. She's been a fantastic employee for us as an organization. We're really grateful that she's has an opportunity.
Move to accept with regret.
One second.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None opposed? Okay, superintendent's report.
Well, it has been a very exciting and interesting week this week. I have to say that I do want to take a moment to publicly acknowledge Matt Angel, our business administrator who could not be here this evening, Dr. Haynes, the director of curriculum, Kristen McNulty, the secretary for curriculum and human resources, Dan Doyle, who works under Mr. Angel for facilities. And last but not least, and most importantly, Diana Rooney, our human resources coordinator for coordinating what is literally the smoothest public health event I've ever seen in my life. We had, it was run so efficiently, the vaccination clinic on Wednesday was run so efficiently that we actually, the vaccinators asked me to go around the high school and middle school and ask them to come sooner because things were running so perfectly. They were actually, they had time, which is phenomenal. I mean, there are some people who are waiting for hours in the parking lot before they can even go in to get vaccinated at places. And yeah, Mr. Baker had that happen. And I have to say that, that.
Not here though.
No, not here. No, no, it was phenomenal. The folks for Walgreens said that by far this was the best run clinic they've done to date by miles. So those people and Diana Rooney in particular deserve our gratitude and I couldn't be more thankful. I mean, they, the amount of data that had to be processed, creating the lists, organizing who, what time, it ran like clockwork. So at nine o'clock, the folks that were drive-ups came up to get drive-in because they couldn't, for immunocompromised folks, they drove in, they received their vaccine and then Memorial came and then Bakey came, no, Bakey first, then Memorial. So we went from lowest to highest grades. By the time we got to Memorial, I was going around the high school saying, we have plenty of room for you, please come down. And that's phenomenal. So I just wanted to say thank you to those people publicly. I think everyone knows that we're going to have some information this evening from Mr. Stack about end of the year activities. It's been an exciting year. We are now exactly one year from when we went remote. And it was so emotionally relieving to see people getting vaccinated. And you know, certainly every day I worry about my staff and this pandemic and balancing their needs and the needs of the children to be in school in person because we all know that children do better mentally and emotionally and physically when they're with their peers, right? There's no substitute for synergy, for being together. We are one of the only school districts that I know of that has been in public five days a week in person. Epping also has been in person and Fremont. But the fact that we've done this is phenomenal. And now we're starting to see that the research is coming out that some of the decisions that we made were very sound. We were using our best knowledge at the time, you know, whatever we had available for information to make decisions. But I want to affirm a couple of things for the public as we move forward into the next couple of months. The first thing that we need to affirm is that three feet of distancing is adequate. That research is becoming very clear. So if you think back to last July, we wondered if we could even be in person at all without having mass spread or having so many quarantines that you couldn't function. Do you remember that last July? We agreed to be remote until mid-October to assess and kind of observe the schools around us. We did the right thing. We didn't know. Now we know. And so now we can make decisions with a much larger set of data and information. And we're going to have to in the next few weeks discuss whether or not we're going to bring our students back full-time. Because the research is showing that with three feet of distance, wearing masks and being, you know, washing and sanitizing and keeping your hands clean, it works. We have not had one case of student-to-student transmission in our public schools this entire year, not one. And we've been in school since October. So that tells me we know what we're doing. And I just want to say that before we have this conversation in the future, this is just a start, right? That we need to start talking about bringing students back. We've asked parents to make a decision until the end of April break. And April break is coming up fast. So we're going to do some surveys the first week of April and then we're gonna come to the board with a recommendation about what to do. I don't know what that is yet. I need to see what parents are thinking and feeling too, right? Because it's important, safety. Everyone has a different lens in this very challenging situation and I respect all perspectives. And I want to hear where folks are at. Having said that, having everyone have an opportunity to receive the vaccine certainly moved our organization forward by months from where we thought we were going to be at the end of the school year. We thought that we were going to be getting vaccines in May. Now we've received them in March and that's very exciting. Having said that, there's been a lot of energy in the last 24 hours on Facebook about the prom and what are we gonna do at the end of the year? And for those of you who were on the board last year, it was incredibly challenging to figure out what to do with prom and graduation because we didn't know then what we know now. Mr. Stack will be presenting some information tonight and I did speak with the, or email back and forth with the some of the seniors and I just wanted you all to know from me that I just explained to them that we understand that they may want to have an event that's a privately funded and hosted event. That's up to them. I have no say over what they do after graduation in the summer. They're technically adults at that point. Fine, but I don't want the perception to be that the board doesn't support them having a prom because that's not true either. We haven't even had that conversation yet. Two of you are new to the table. That's not fair. And so they did change the GoFundMe language to reflect a more accurate perspective. So I, you know, I think it was important that I moved quickly last evening and engaged them in that conversation. And Mr. Stack will be sharing some preliminary information tonight, but he's not asking the board to make any decisions tonight. He's just working with the kids to figure out what to do. We're gonna have some big challenges ahead of us in the next months. Number one, how soon do we bring students back fully? Number two, how do we handle graduation, which we want the students to have some voice in? And number three, what do we do with the prom? Those are gonna be the big three things that we're going to face in the next four or five weeks. Having said that, I want to remind everyone, we are still in a pandemic. Everyone's excited and we're optimistic. There are variants of this virus that we don't know about yet. And we're going to take things very carefully and slowly because frankly, we've made it this far and I'm not gonna mess it up right at the end. Right? I love the kids and I want them to be safe and I want them to be in school. But we have worked so hard to do this right. I want to be careful that that pressure from people feeling like, oh my goodness, it's over. It's not over. We're not there yet, but we're getting closer, right? The beginning is done, the middle is done, but I'm not quite sure where the end is yet, but it seems to be in sight provided that we don't have a major change that we can't predict. So that's where we are. Do I think that we're going to be able to have graduation as it was in 2019? No, I don't. There will still be social distance requirements, there will still be masks. The kids may choose to do the drive-through graduation because frankly, the feedback after that event was really positive. The parents got to be right up front, see their kids graduate, Grammys and Grammys and everyone got to be there. The kids actually kind of enjoyed it and it was interesting to see their response once it was over versus when it began. We want to ask them what they want to do. There are a lot of questions. So I'm just asking our whole community to just, you know, I know that we're all excited and we're taking a sigh of relief, but just, just give us a chance to process everything. And once we've made a decision, then, then respond. Please don't respond before a decision's even been made. Just give us a chance to figure it out, have the board discuss, make a decision. And it's like we said last year, whatever decision we make, 30% of people are going to hate it. 30% of people are going to love it and the other 60, the other 30%, 33% or whatever in the middle, they're gonna be indifferent. And that's the way it's played out. Every decision we've made all the way along. Somebody's completely unhappy and somebody's thrilled. So we're going to have some big ones to make in the next two months. Yes.
I'm always saying this because this is information I'd like to have when we decide if we're gonna open or not. I would like to know if there is, or if you can even do it, the new hires. Because to, to say we're opening, but we're hiring 10 new teachers and they haven't been vaccinated, that's gonna come into the mix. So I don't know if you can even do it. Diana now has a contact, maybe
Yeah.
something in July or August before school starts.
The biggest.
Out there because that's something I'm gonna want to need to know when it comes to, do we open?
Yeah.
We may not have the teachers. We may not have the teachers vaccinated because they're new.
Well, and that, that's one thing, but I think that most, the aim of the government at this point is to offer the vaccine to all adults by May. All adults by May. So we should know, I'm talking about, are we gonna bring more students back after April break P this year?
Yeah.
We need to talk about it. Windows can be opened. We can use the outdoor spaces. But I don't, I'm not ready to have that conversation tonight. I'm just prepping you that it's coming up.
Well, they just changed the rules on that as far as.
Yes.
Sorry, yet.
Yes.
I just got an email today and they've changed the rules a little bit about quarantining.
Huge.
Do you have that?
Yes.
Okay, so I won't have to.
Yeah, we sent it all out to staff today and what Pete's alluding to, and I'll stop in a moment because this will be the April two meetings that will discuss this. I don't want to do it today.
Oh, that's all right.
But, but the, the, um, the rule is that if someone is, if, if I had COVID, which clearly I have a cold and we've all know that, but if I did develop COVID, you wouldn't have to quarantine right now if you're three feet away. So that is huge, right? That is the big issue that I had to face.
In the classroom.
That's in the classroom. So if we're in a classroom of 25 students and everyone's three feet away wearing a mask and someone has COVID, the whole group no longer has to quarantine. We actually just brought back a classroom that was quarantined yesterday per.
I believe this, the individual with it has to quarantine.
The individual with it will always have to quarantine.
Okay, well.
Everyone else does no longer have to do that. That is a huge pivotal shift for our organization.
And those who are vaccinated two weeks out no longer have to quarantine.
That's right. That's right. If you receive both doses of the vaccine or the single Johnson &amp; Johnson, you no longer have to quarantine and the travel restrictions are getting lifted too. So I'll, I'll develop kind of like a Patty is working on, sorry, Dr. Haynes is working on a executive summary with Diana Rooney for the board. And they're already sending information out to staff to get them ready and appraised. But all of these things will play into this decision about when to bring students back.
Will that include quarantining rules for after April vacation? Is there potential that may change?
It already has. It changed today. So everybody can, can go, you can travel in anywhere in the US. But it was just, I only got it a few hours ago. So I promised to send everything out as soon as Diana. She's working on a really nice, clear document for you all. But yeah, it's huge, right? A lot has changed in just 24 hours, which is kind of what the whole year has been like. You know, every time I turn around, there's a new rule. All right, so I'm looking forward to cautious optimism. Very cautious optimism. Yeah, Jamie?
Yes.
Just from my two cents, I've advocated for getting the kids back. These new rules are basically reconfirming some of the comments that we thought earlier. And I think that that should be the top priority of the administration, the board, is to get kids back as quick as we can. The longer they're out, the more at risk they really are and bringing them back is much less risk. So I would be, I would advocate that we, we focus on that first and foremost. Thank you.
Thank you. And based on the information that I've received in the last 24 to 48 hours, I would agree that that's the direction that I would like to see us head. I just need more time to unpack it. Great. That's, that concludes the superintendent's report for this evening.
Okay, all right, we'll move on to committee reports. And actually, before we start that, I just want to make a quick little comment. I will, especially Heather and Maura, if you want to email me in the next four or five days with committees you would be interested in being on and why you think your qualifications would make you good on those committees, that would be great. And then if you guys also want to send me, you know, where you'd like to be, stay, you know, that would be great as well. And if you guys don't mind putting them, you know, one through three, top choice, third choice, that would be great. I'd really appreciate that. Thank you, everybody.
Madam Chairman, can I ask a quick question?
Yeah.
Could the ISA committee continue to meet as is, because we are in the process, at least for the next four weeks until we straighten out the next annual subcommittees? Could the current committee meet for the purpose of selecting a math program? Because they're ready to do that and they'd like to meet next week.
Yes, I completely agree with that because I think, you know, Tammy, Jamie and I have all, we've unpacked a lot of information and trying to put somebody new into that is gonna be, would be extremely challenging. So, and I think, you know, there's been a lot of good work done already there, so no need to make any changes. So absolutely. Yep.
So, but just for the new members, the process will be the, the committee will review the math program, but the board will vote on adoption. So you'll still have a voice in it. I just don't want anyone to feel like that, something this big, most subcommittee items that are, that are big come to the full board anyway. The subcommittee just does the homework on the issue and makes recommendations and this one's big. So, and I have to say that Dr. Haynes, Kim, Kim Conan and Donna Donnell have worked really hard with a large group of teachers to do this incredibly collaboratively. I've seen the report and I'm really looking forward to discussing this because it's so important for the kids.
All right, so does anyone have a committee report?
I mean, just, just that. The ISA will be meeting next Wednesday at 4:30 and we look forward to the administrative, the administration's proposal regarding math curriculum.
I have the finance committee report. I gave a quick update on this last time, but I got the official report here, so I'll read it off quickly. Meeting was held at 4:30 March 3rd, 2021 and attendance were Mr. Jim Baker, Mr. Pete Broderick and myself. Mr. Baker motioned acceptance of December meetings. Mr. Broderick seconded. They were approved three to zero. Mr. Angel provided the business administrator comments on the state of the state and the district from a business administrator's perspective. He also shared this online, so if people see the video, they can see that. Cash on hand was about 6.1 million, representing about 2.1 months of operations. Revenues, we've received year-to-date approximately $31.8 million, about 90.2% of the overall budgeted revenues. Local state property taxes from Kingston was about 15 million. Local state property taxes from Newton was about 11.4. Fremont School District tuition of about 2 million with about 2 million still to build. Return of health insurance premiums for FY20 of approximately just under 400,000. School building aid of 257,000 was received and another 257,000 is anticipated. Expenses, spending was broken down by school. Overall, 92% of the funds have been encumbered for FY21. Bakey is 8.1% unencumbered. Memorial is 11.1% unencumbered. Middle school was 2.1% unencumbered. High school was 8.6% unencumbered. SAU is over expended by about 9% and that is due to custodial services and legal costs are the main drivers. We have paid bond principal and interest of approximately 2.3 million dollars. District-wide spending was 4.5% unencumbered. Fitzpatrick again, requested of Matt the number of students per school and the result in spending per student per campus would be provided. So Mr. Angel is going to be providing that in the future. Mr. Angel also provided info on financial risks. Engineering costs will be coming associated with assessing the boilers at Bakey and recommending a solution. There's an update on that in the meeting today, so we'll get that later. Memorial School Playground Equipment is beginning to fail and will be brought forward as a CIP item, capital investment plan. Dump truck body is rotting. We need a new dump bed. And three new roof leaks at Bakey were identified from the last storm and we're seeking quotes on those. Mr. Angel provided information of actual cost versus prior projections. Last year, we had projected a $54,000 on the memorial roof repair. They came in at 54,000 as quoted. The memorial entryway was projected at 60,000. He does not have the final numbers on that. There's a lot of internal labor done. That originally had been estimated at 150, then the estimation was lowered to 60 because of internal labor. Mr. Angel thinks that that would be coming in very close. He'll provide that information at the next meeting. Paving changes at the high school, the estimate was 65,000. The actual invoices came in at 65,279. New cameras at Bakey originally estimated at 10,000. They were currently estimated at about 35,000. Mr. Gordon Parks came in to review the information with the committee. Total cameras, there's 22 IP cameras and 10 analog cameras in the current system. The new system would replace the analog cameras with digital IP cameras, adding a net of 14. And then he also provided the information as to the number of cameras per campus and I won't just read through that. It'll be in the minutes. People can see that. The current quote is down to 29,765 and Mr. Parks thinks that there's further savings to be had there. Mr. Angel reviewed a budget request transfer. It's actually a line item transfer. 34,000 from Health and Dental to Data Communications that were over. And that was because of taxes not being anticipated when the budget was created. He also provided information on the three audits that were to be performed in FY21. Special ed difficulty assessing while students remote, so needs to be delayed until post-COVID was the information provided by Mr. Angel. Athletics, he had not had a chance to talk to the athletic director. He will be doing that. IT is moving along, but a lot of activity in supporting the new, the new COVID-related Chromebooks and bandwidth. And Mr. Angel will provide further details at the next meeting. Budget review of expenses, healthcare expended 2.5 million, 640,000 remains unexpended. Non-healthcare expended 16, 17 million with 2.2 million unexpended. And total unencumbered as of 2/28 was 2.8 million as of now. Mr. Angel also identified new COVID grant money for the state of 442,000 to bring total COVID relief for Sanborn to 1,134,527 is the total expected number. We already had read through what the trust balances were in the facilities meeting that was reported last week. These are the same dates, so I won't go through that. Mr. Angel reviewed auditor engagement letter. The auditors have agreed to provide opportunities for improvement in their audit report as part of the management letter. And then Mr. Angel had not had a chance to get to the following items that will be carried forward to the next meeting. Online software usage report, audit follow-ups and student cash reconciliation and an updated final spending report. And also an updated reorganization cost spreadsheet. And that's what I have.
Excuse me.
Thank you.
What do you mean by unencumbered?
Unencumbered means that we have not issued.
People, I'm sorry.
So unencumbered means that we have, we have not issued POs against them. We have not made any commitments of the district to anybody to spend that money. So that money is still available to be encumbered, to be spent on something as it is needed as part of the budget.
Somebody has to do this. Pete knows.
I, I just did it because my eyes fogged up.
Okay, all right, I'm just telling you.
I took it down just so I could talk to Jamie.
Okay, well, you're on video, so I just want to make.
Six feet away.
Modeling for the children.
I know the health officer in town, he won't do anything.
The health officer in town doesn't, yeah, I, it doesn't do much.
So you have, you have expenses.
Any chance you get to zing me? I'm sorry.
You taught me. Sorry.
The expenses are, you've either expended them, which means you don't have the cash anymore. You've already paid that. You've encumbered them means I've issued a PO to somebody, so I have an obligation to them. I have encumbered those funds. They're not free and available anymore. I've already encumbered them. Unencumbered means I have not done that and those are available to cover expenses for the balance of the year. So it's remaining money, if you will.
Or it's money that is yet to be encumbered.
We also have people watching.
Right.
And we use it a lot and people may not know what you're talking about.
Right.
How they know, it's either.
They often don't know what I'm talking about.
Well, that's why you gotta.
Okay, we're putting one of you between the two of them for the next meeting, just so you know.
A degree in business.
It's important for the public to remember that.
I understand, I understand.
Unencumbered, it may also not yet be encumbered through payroll. So it's, it doesn't mean that it's going to be, I just don't want people to confuse the potential year-end fund balance with what's unencumbered at this time because just because it's unencumbered today, payroll is going to run for months. So it's, yeah, okay.
So facilities was scheduled to meet today, but we didn't because we felt it was better to have the organizational meeting than set the next facilities meeting after that. The next school board meeting. The next school board meeting, that typically Facilities is the, before the second school board meeting of the month. So looking at the calendar, that would be on the 14th, but that's not set yet. You can look at the SAU website to see what the actual date will be.
So Chair Dutton, one of the things that I think should be looked at is the timing of the different committees. So the Finance Committee, the data isn't available yet when the Finance Committee is held on the first of the month. So you're always looking at things that are two months old rather than just the past month. So if the Finance Committee could be moved further down the schedule, you'd have more accurate information for those meetings. So just a thought.
Great.
Can I ask a quick question about that? Would, would it help if we put Facilities on the first Wednesday and Finance on the third? Just flip them?
Yeah, that would be fine.
Okay.
Right, right now, we, we're always a couple of months back.
Yep.
We, we get the review of the, the most recent fund information comes at the Facilities meeting. And then the following Finance meeting, we say, look at the same numbers.
Yeah, okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
Plus Facilities comes before Finance on the committee reports.
All the more reason. All right, since Jake is excused from the meeting, we won't have a super. So we move on to our first public comments. There is no one here, so we will move on to new business. So Mr. Stack, it looks like you are up.
I get it. Jake didn't come tonight.
He's planning the insurrection depending on what you say.
Yeah, probably. Thanks for having me. Congratulations to our two new board members.
Thank you.
I don't think people in the community really understand, well, these people do, but just how many hours you put in to do this work. It's not easy. So appreciate you stepping up. It's important for people to do that. All right. So we're going to talk about some end of year activities. I think Mr. Ambrose did a great job kind of giving you the lay of the land and a foundation for what we're thinking, or at least what we're up against. I got to point out, you know, whatever, whatever we're talking about for plans right now, especially this year where there's so much changing around us. Think of these as the latest and greatest plans. Don't think of anything as a final, final. As with anything, we can make adjustments as we see fit because situations change. We get some new information, some change in regulations, et cetera. To that same token, things can't be fluid forever, ever, right? At some point, we make commitments to certain things. We agree to rent equipment or we agree to hold things on certain dates in a certain way. And it, it's got to be the way that it is in order for us to kind of move forward. So last year to this year, big difference, right? We know a lot more about our situation, about the virus. We've been very thankful to be back in the building since October. That has certainly taught us a lot. There's light at the end of the tunnel as we're getting vaccines. And yet, as Mr. Ambrose said, we're also still in the middle of a pandemic, right? My oldest in high school was all set to go back five days a week. He's been two days a week all year. Monday, he was supposed to start five days a week and Sunday night, the school was put in remote for the whole week because they had four different instances of COVID. At least two of them were related to what seems to be a much larger event from an outside event in the seacoast area. So we're not out of the woods yet and we've got to keep that in mind. So having said that, this year, I've been really focused on trying to get us some information earlier. I've been working for the last couple of months with about half a dozen seniors to kind of talk through some different ideas, a number of staff members to talk through some different ideas. So the information that you all received in advance, yes, that, okay. Just making sure you have it. So the information that you got in advance is sort of our latest and greatest. I'm calling it the preliminary plans for now. And I'm not going to, you know, I'll take questions after if you have them, but I just want to touch upon a few things with these. So just starting at the top of the list, now this is not an all inclusive list. We're going to be, you know, handling separately some of our honor society ceremonies, award ceremonies, band concerts, chorus concerts, that sort of thing separately. But these are some of the big ticket items that we're going to touch upon. We are planning to run a senior honor recognition dinner. We do believe that that is an event that we could run in person for families and students to be in our building because it is a relatively small group. It's about 14 or 15 students that qualified for that dinner and their families. And we can have families pretty spread out. So we're looking forward to that. That would be followed up by our scholarship evening and we are also recommending that we run that event. It's the same night. We run that event in person for our students. But we would ask that families participate and watch in a virtual format. Trying to bring a number of adults into the building that are not norm, is, they're not normally in our building. That is something that we are concerned about. But having our students here, we don't see any issue with being able to spread them out in the auditorium so that they can be a part of that event. And we would livestream it, of course, for others. And that then, that sort of takes us to our graduation week. So we are, actually, let me touch upon, before I talk about graduation week, let me touch upon prom just briefly. So prom, as you know, last year, prom did not happen. It was one of those events that we just couldn't find a way to make it work for our students. And that was a known entity that existed across the state. Prom at Sanborn, which maybe is a little different from other proms and other schools. That is an event that is planned by the junior class. And then it is open to juniors and seniors. And it's been that way for many years here at Sanborn. It's, it's one of the nice things about your senior year is you don't have to plan a prom. You get to attend the prom that the juniors planned for you. So really, a lot of our kids get to go to prom twice. So not having prom last year didn't impact our seniors as much as it might have in other schools because they had their prom as a junior. It does however, impact our current seniors because it was their prom that got canceled last year. So prom, the prom date was set at the beginning of the year, not knowing where we were going to end up. And it was set for June 5th. So there's been a lot of debate over the last couple of days about prom. Because I think just like everything else, people want to know what's going to be happening and what's going to be going on. And this has been a tricky one for our junior class because and many high schools around the state have been trying to figure this out. The dancing piece, I feel like I'm, I'm going into like an eighties movie here, right? Like they just want to dance and we don't want them to dance. It's not that we don't want them to dance, but you can understand that it's the dancing element of a prom that creates the biggest problem and hurdle to overcome. So when we first talked to students a couple of weeks ago about prom, our message to them was, what if we didn't have that dancing piece? Could we replace the dancing piece with some other form of entertainment that you could help decide? Because if we could limit, you know, 300 kids in a small room moving around as much as they want, breathing on each other, that, that's going to be where we're going to have the issues. So the junior class worked through some options. They presented them. Surveyed students and students loud and clear said, we really want you to find a way to make the dancing work, which I get. I understand. Makes, it makes sense. Same plight that our principals across the state have been dealing with. Now every Thursday morning, I get on a call with about half the principals in the state in high schools in New Hampshire, and we talk about all different kinds of things pandemic related. If somebody's got a good idea, it gets shared and we steal. That's just what we do. And we've been talking about prom for the last few weeks. And we finally decided, right around the time we had the meeting with the juniors, we need to have a meeting and we need to invite the students who are planning the prom to this meeting so that if there are good ideas out there, we can capture them. So that's exactly what we did and that meeting actually happened last week. Now I went into that meeting thinking, I'm not so sure anybody's figured this out. Kids thought the same thing. We were surprised to find out that there were some schools that had some good ideas. It gave us some renewed hope. So after that meeting last week, the junior class went back to the drawing board to start continuing work on a proposal that they will be bringing to you in a couple of weeks that does include some dancing. So I hope that you'll hear them out and listen to what they have to say and know that all the finer details aren't going to be ironed out in two weeks. But enough of the details, I think, for you to make a decision will be there. And enough of the details for our students to make a decision on whether or not this is something that they would want to attend will be there. We recognize and they recognize that even when they come to you in two weeks and they talk about a plan for having dancing, we're not going to get into the nitty gritty of how close can you be? Because as was, as was shown today, they changed a lot of the rules on us today, right? So we know that that's going to be an evolving thing. But at some point, if we're going to start selling tickets, we're going to be telling kids at a minimum, expect it's going to look like this. The situation might be better than that, but you're buying your ticket knowing that it might only look like this, right? So that's something that has to be considered. I believe the junior class plans to hold the event here. They do have, they do have a deposit on a venue right now. They are nervous about how many students are going to want to come or not come. And as you know, sitting on a big contract like that and then not getting the number of students that you think will come, you don't want to be left holding the bag financially for that. So in their plan that you are going to hear about in a couple of weeks, expect that it will include that prom would be here, which would be interesting. We've never done that in the 16 years that we've been in this building. But I am very optimistic that the kids have a very exciting plan to show you all. And I am, I just want to see the kids have an end of year experience that's meaningful for them. Do you know what I mean? It's just, they need something like that. So I, I am very, very hopeful. So that's, that's my little prom trailer for you. If you read my letter this morning, that's something that I started crafting yesterday. But I always like to sleep on it before I send it out. It's just, you know, one of those things. So, but it was again, trying to give folks some context because I think originally there was a message out there that one, we were not supportive of a prom or that we were not supportive of a prom that had some of the elements that the kids are looking for. And that couldn't be further from the truth. But I do recognize that there are folks in the community that also feel like their kids have lost a lot and they want to make sure that the kids are going to have things. So fully respect anything that they're trying to put together or plan for their kids. I think it's, I think it's great. Maybe our kids will benefit and have multiple things to participate in, which is not a bad thing. Let's talk graduation week. So we are looking at June 11th as a graduation day, if you're okay with that. It is typical that we do the first or the second Friday in June, depending on when, where that day falls. June 5th would have been a little too early in terms of getting in our instructional hours. I, I feel a lot more comfortable with June 11th. So if we back up from that, when we do graduation, the Friday before graduation is always the last official day of classes. And then we use Monday, Tuesday and Wednesday as reassessment and recovery days. We inherently always have some students who just, they have some additional things that they need to make up. And there has to be a window of time for them to do that and for our teachers to get things graded accordingly. So that would be happening Monday, Tuesday and Wednesday while our underclassmen are having normal days of school. Thursday would be our baccalaureate event. That's always the day that we have baccalaureate. Baccalaureate is an event that is not actually a school district event. It is actually a Kingston Congregational Church event that we promote. And you know, about a quarter to a third of our students attend that typically. So we have not had, entered into conversations with the church yet about what that might look like. It normally is held at the church. We will give them the option if they want to do something outside here using our outdoor setup, if they want to do that. Last year, it was a virtual event. I think it'll be some kind of an in-person event. They're very big into music. They have a house band that is fantastic. So I expect that to be a big part of that event as well. So then we get to the morning of graduation. So when I pitched this to the kids originally, first thing they said was, well, last year's graduation was awesome. So wouldn't that be our starting point? I said, I'm glad you said that because we spent a lot of time planning that COVID ceremony last year. And I would agree that although we can make some adjustments, that's a great starting point and that's exactly what we did. So we are looking at, unless things drastically change, that is part of our preliminary plans right now. So the, what graduation might look like that day, possibly, this has not been ironed out yet. In fact, I don't even think it was in your draft of the handout because this is relatively new information. We might see if there's a way that we can pull off, like the kids getting a bus ride to their elementary school. They won't be able to walk through the elementary school like we've done in past years, but we might be able to have teachers come out and wave, that sort of thing. I got to work out the details with that because the teachers have kids in their own classrooms. So I don't know what that might look like, but we're, we're talking about that for the morning. Then our graduates would come back here. They would, they would watch their senior video together, which they normally do. At about 10 o'clock in the morning, they would have their class day ceremony, which is pretty typical of what they do. Class day is actually all the other stuff that we do at graduation. That's not part of graduation night. We give away a lot of department awards and the students have time to recognize teachers and, and parents that have been really active with them and other sorts of things. The difference for that event, oh, we'll also do our yearbook dedication then. But we will keep the kids together. We did not do that last year. In the gym, together as a class wearing cap and gown, which I think is great. Our underclassmen would watch from their advisories streaming in. So the whole school gets to participate, but we're not putting everybody in one place, right? Parents would be able to watch as well from home because we'd be streaming it. At 12, that's when our underclassmen are always dismissed. And then our staff are able to have a senior lunch with the graduates. That would be the same, which is great. Same like pre-COVID, same. So then another difference is we're then talking at 1 o'clock about having the graduates go back into the gym to listen to the first part of the graduation ceremony, the speeches. All right. This is different from last year. Last year, everybody watched this from home. This year, we really would like to get the seniors together, sitting together to hear that. And we would broadcast it for families that want to watch from home. And then the graduates would leave. And then the remainder of the day would look like it did last year. The graduates would reconvene at the seminary and Baky campuses. They would line up. They'd have one or two cars per graduate. They, the, the graduates were normally at the front of graduation because their class council or valedictorian, et cetera, would still be at the front. We would do a parade through town, which was highly successful. People told me last year, when COVID goes away, the parade better not because they thought that was just amazing. The cars would come onto the campus. They would snake into the parking lot. They're basically all queued up in the parking area. And then the kids would get a chance to walk across the stage, get their diploma, go ring the bell, which is a very big tradition for us, get their picture taken, get back with their family. The car would loop back around to watch the other graduates. It was quite the festive atmosphere last year. We probably had, I estimated a couple thousand people watching our graduation ceremony last year when other people were debating if they were going to have a ceremony with one or two parents sitting six feet apart in the bleachers. And we had a couple thousand people watch our ceremony. We had no issues because we were able to contain people because they were in cars. So that's our starting point ceremony. Now I will tell you, because it, there was this, there's, and this happened last year too. There's always this second idea of what if we put all the kids on the football field? And can we do it all on the football field? Would that work? And it, it sounds great in theory and it might, but there's a lot of logisticals issues with it too. Just even if we put the kids in the bleachers and have all the parents out in the field and we try to spread them out, you start having sightline issues. You have sound issues, getting the sound to carry. You have accessibility issues getting people down there. You have weather issues. If it rains a couple of days before, it's, it's like spongy down there. You have lighting issues and sun issues because you'll be staring at, like it's, it starts to add up when you think about the logistics. It's not that it's not doable and the kids said this too, but when you think about. It's not that it's not doable and the kids said this too, but when you think about what the other, you know, drive-through option allows us, it's got a lot more perk to it. At least that's what the kids feel. So that's, you know, that's where we're at right now. Like Tom said, you know, we go in, at this point of the year, I know that every day I'm going to be, you know, handling people who are just not happy with a direction we're going or a decision we're making because it doesn't matter which way we go with a decision. There's that thirty, third rule of thirds with a third of the people not being happy with it. And the, all that I can do is say to people, we want the kids to have a memorable experience and we're doing our best to try to find that happy medium to do that. So I'll appreciate any support you can give me along the way and try to like steer people when they have questions my way. Don't, don't help them jump to conclusions that we're trying to avoid something or sidestep something. I, you know, will use any, any capital that I have with people to try to help mitigate some things and help them understand that we really are trying to help their kids and, and find that happy ground. So I don't know what you got for questions, but I'm happy to take.
Add one, one, one piece before we take questions. You, you said something that I think is incredibly important. I, I don't know how many of you attended graduation in person last year, but having been the one who stood on the stage with Ms. Mahoney and hand the diplomas out to the kids, and it, it's just important to recognize that it took Brian and I close to 40 hours of meetings, conversations, and I'm being conservative between the time on Facebook, emails, phone calls, meetings with people to get to the point where we had a graduation that we felt was functional. And we tried to meet two criteria. One was every kid's parents and family, the complete family got to get involved, right? So that everyone can see their child graduating, not just one or two people in person, in real time. And number two, that we kept people in quote cohorts or pods so that there wouldn't be spread of, of COVID. It worked. There was a side thing that happened that I thought was really cool, that Brian was being quite humble about. It was really fun. Like the kids, just there was this great festive atmosphere of all these kids decorating their cars, lining up, going around the loop, honking for each other. It honestly, I have to say, it was way more fun than regular graduation where everyone's just sitting in a row sweating and waiting to throw their cap in the air. It was really cool and it kind of had a little bit of rowdiness to it in a way that was festive, but it was so organized and well-run. And, and Tammy, if you want to say anything, I mean, you were there with me, but I, I left it with a warm heart about the energy.
There was a lot of energy, absolutely.
So I think it's important to recognize that, that sometimes change isn't bad. Things happen and, and some good comes out of it. So I think most importantly, if the kids want to sit all together on the grass, it's about the kids. It's not for me, it's not for us, it's for them, but it is for their families too. There are, and it's not just their parents, it's their Grammys and their aunts and uncles and their grampies. And the, the people in their lives who maybe aren't relate, like official relatives or blood relatives or, or marriage relatives. There are people that are important in their lives that might be in the car with them to see that important event. And there is a component of that, that I struggle emotionally with balancing. Like it is for the kids and it's about the kids, but it's also for me as a parent of a 15-year-old, that's a long time to get, that's kind of my day too. Sorry, don't mean to be selfish, I love my kids, but you know, if he told, my son said to me, yeah, I want to sit on the grass and tough luck to you, I'd be like, yeah, I ain't going to fly bub. So, so I think we'd have to have a conversation about it, but ultimately we'll come, we'll come to some conclusion and some people will be very unhappy and that's, we understand that. And some people will be really happy and that's the hardest part.
Yeah, but we also have to recognize too, that everyone wants something different. We are still going to have people that are thinking, that is way too much. I don't know that I want my kid participating in some of those things because it's too risky.
Yep, yep.
And they have a right to that opinion and they have a right to be included too. And they may not sit in the gymnasium watching the speeches. Okay, fine. But for the kids that want that experience, we think we can try to marry some of that together. So it's, it's a process and I hope coming out of this, I hope you're supportive of where we're at. And we can start advertising that to families as our preliminary plan and then continue to take feedback, continue to look at changing conditions. And if we see an opportunity to make a pivot, that's going to be significantly better than what we're doing, then by all means, we're going to come back and look to do that with you.
Okay, this is me, me again. My heart hurts and I just, I'm, I know I, every time graduation last year, the basketball, my heart hurts. I'm, I am very supportive, I appreciate everything, you know, this plan. I, I'm glad that the kids will be able to come together. But I'm just, I just want to express and I think probably on behalf of everyone here, how, you know, how sad we are still are that families will not be able to, you know, be part of all of these events. I have, as you know, been through this with my own son and I know how special it was. And you know, you spent 12 school years or four, the four high school, kind of envisioning how graduation's going to be, how you're going to celebrate it with your children, class day and the scholarship night and just again, graduation itself, kind of, it's just, it's, it's just hard to kind of, it's, my heart hurts for families and the graduates. And I just, I really, I mean, I think this will all be very special. I, but I just want to express how I, how sorry I am that it's just kind of going to be different from what families might want and just.
You're saying what we're all thinking, Tammy, it's okay.
And someone needs to say it, so I guess that's my role.
Yeah, yeah, I'm right there with you. That's what makes it hard, you know, I, I.
Very hard.
I'm going to try not to say much because I will cry because my daughter and my nephew both graduate this year. So thank you for speaking up. Any, any other comments or questions for Brian? Yes.
Just a question on the prom and more logistics than anything else. The, if it's going to be on campus and we've not done that before, we probably have to make sure that we've covered the base with insurance people. I have a distinct recollection from days of yore of people trying to perhaps sneak alcohol into prior proms and things of that nature. And we just need to make sure that we've got our bases covered.
Sure, yeah, and I, and I believe that we do because that would be no different. You know, we've held semi-formals and other dances here before and you know, our prime X policy, we, we will double check, but I, I feel pretty confident in saying that it, it will cover us for this. And, and even at that being here, it won't all be in one room. You know, we'll have an eating room, we'll have a dancing area, an entertainment area. Kids may be signing up together in groups so they can all be with their friends and then moving together through these. So it allows us to keep smaller groups. It's easier to kind of monitor stuff and they get to be with their friends, which they're happy about too. We always have a police officer, that's true of any dance, it would be true of this as well. And a number of adults, all the administrators and things get searched before they come in. But these things can happen and we've had issues at proms before. Yep.
I have a question about process. Last year, we were kind of improvising at times because everything was, you know, when we first went remote, almost exactly to the day today, it was two weeks. And then two weeks more and then three weeks. And we couldn't really say, all right, we're going to be remote for the rest of the year. Here's the plan for when we're going to make these decisions. And that made a lot of chaos, it made it really hard. Brian, I just would like for the purpose of the community, just to say very clearly at the close of this part of this board meeting, my understanding from talking with you is that we were going to bring something to the board on either the 7th of April or the 14th for a final decision so that everyone knew what the plan was. And part of that is if a group of students don't agree with the prom plan and they want to hold a private event in the summer on a private location with their own private funds, that's not up to us. We don't have any say over that, they're adults at that point, they're graduated. But they need to know what the prom's going to look like based on the rules so that they can make that decision for themselves. And as I said to some folks on a, on a, on a, a phone call or a message, I said, I, I certainly support the, the spunk of the kids, right? That they're saying, hey, I don't like this, so I'm going to do something about it. That's my kind of kid, like let's, we're raising them right. We just need to tell them what the game is and we need to be clear as a board, what we can do within the rules. And part of the problem is that the rules are changing so fast that we may make a decision on the 14th that isn't quite what can happen as of mid-May.
Right.
That's what's so hard about this. And there's a point where we just have to say, this is the plan, even if the rules change so that everyone can plan.
Correct.
Because it's really hard to, what Brian and I learned last year is that it's really hard to switch mid-process. Like once we make a decision, generally we need to stick with it because there's so many moving pieces that occur. That doesn't mean that we can't be flexible sometimes, we, we always have to be. I mean, if, if somebody says all mask mandates or everything's clear, we're good to go, then that would certainly change things very quickly and we would figure that out. I, I don't see that happening before middle of next year, but.
They would know a worst case scenario. They would be buying a ticket for the prom, knowing that it's not going to be more restrictive than that, what they just.
That's a great way to put it, Brian.
It might get, right, there will be dancing. Will there be close dancing? I don't know, right now, the restrictions prevent it. You, you can't have it. So you know, we could, we, we know we can do dancing. We've learned from a couple other savvy, actually kids in other high schools. One that actually already presented and got approval from her school board and shared that with all the other kids on that call was pretty amazing. So yeah, for prom, the kids would come, are going to come back and present that to you. They're not quite ready to do that. I gave you an overview, they will have another layer of detail for you to consider.
And would that be on April 7th or 14th, do you think?
They are, they would be ready to do it on the 7th, but it's up to you whether you want them to do it. The, the prom is not until June, they have time. It's not mid, normally it's in May and that is crunch time. So you, you tell me when you want them and they'll be here.
Whatever works for you. If we could do it on the 7th and get this figured out so that the students can respond to the stimulus and have time to make alternative plans if they feel that's what's best for them and their families, then I think the sooner the better, but is that okay? Can I just get a nod from the board, is everyone okay with that?
Yeah, I'm good.
Yeah, okay, April 7th it is then.
A prom proposal on the 7th, great. So it does, but, but at least my, my hope is that coming out of tonight, the document that you've been looking at, I can start to share with families, I want to use the word preliminary plan so that people understand that it's not final and it would come with some context as to what they're looking at. But families are asking and other schools are starting to make those, I don't want to say decisions, but they're putting things out. The newspapers and the TV studios are asking, Tom and I just got an email tonight from a news reporter from WMUR who's already looking to know if we've made any decisions yet. So that's, you know, it helps get that conversation going earlier and helping people kind of find acceptance for what it's going to look like too.
Same for graduation. Do you think graduation would be something that could be presented to the board in, in April as well, on the 7th or 14th? Just so that we know what's happening or do you need a little more time for that, Brian?
No, I, I mean, tonight, I'm ready to, to tell the community, this is our preliminary plan. Unless you'd like to, well, I mean, I guess they already kind of know, anyone who's watching already knows. But I mean, if you'd rather me wait and come back on the 7th, I can, but I don't know that what I'll have is anything different.
I, I would like to have a meeting myself on a Zoom call with the senior class advisors, similar to what we did last year.
Yep.
And I would like them to come and present to the board that they have fully bought into this plan and then for the board to adopt it.
Sure.
With the kids involved because it's theirs. So let's, let's talk this week and, and either on the 7th or the 14th, have a graduation proposal approval agenda item.
Fine.
Just for the sake of transparency for the community so that they can come for public comment.
Sure.
Tonight was just an update, I don't want to, I want to move, I want to move carefully.
Yep, that's fine too.
And with full transparency. I, I have been traumatized after last year, so I'm trying to avoid that again at all costs.
So for now, for the, for folks who are asking, they certainly can watch the board meeting if they, which is a public meeting, or, or we will say that we're looking at June 11th and we're going to be coming with a more formal proposal then, yeah.
Perfect.
Great.
Great.
Do we need, do we need a vote to approve June 11th or is that?
No, we'll do that on April. Do you need a vote for June 11th now?
I definitely need a vote for June 11th now because everything else that we plan, at least revolves around the date.
Okay, so I guess we need a motion to set the graduation date as June 11th, 2021.
So moved.
Second, all right, any discussion?
I'll give you one more piece of information that you need to make this decision. So we are required by minimum standards for school approval in the state of New Hampshire to offer a certain number of instructional hours for students to make it to constitute a year. We are allowed five less days for seniors. So we are within, by selecting that date, you are within your minimum standards for school approval. You meet the requirement that they have at least gotten to that minimum instructional hour point by that date, even with all of the Wednesdays. Just so you know.
All right, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor? All right, unanimous.
Thank you.
Brian's going to handle the next item because.
Okay, all right, so on to athletics.
I'm back. Mr. Dawson shared a document with you, athletic update. I know, I mean, I don't need to read that entire document, but well, there's two, well, there's two pieces to this. You want to do the sports update? Well, actually, I guess we should do the plaques first, right? So Mr. Dawson shared a document with all of you that is titled awards and recognition program. Is that correct? Okay, perfect, great. So first of all, I want to say, Mr. Dawson has done an incredible job this year, given everything in a new role during a pandemic. Quite honestly, trying to schedule games and, and handle some of the curveballs he's had to handle have been 10 times the amount of work as it would have been in a non-COVID year. So I, I can't, can't thank him enough for his approach to it, his organization and his attention to detail. Superb. Awards and recognition has been difficult, to say the least. He inherited a system where it was great. We've had an athletic director here for a long time who's made a lot of accommodations for kids. There's been a lot of things happening that when that athletic director retired, a lot of that institutional knowledge went with her. There were things that she just did that were not written down anywhere and things that she just knew to do that were just, despite our best efforts to try to extract all that information, it was a lot. And with the award pieces, there was a lot. Everything Mr. Dawson had to do, one of the things that didn't happen as well as it could have was getting kids the different awards that they are owed for different things. And you can see, he's got a list here of what some of these look like. It's a lot. He's looking for some ways to kind of revamp and streamline things so it is a little bit more efficient and easy to follow regardless of what the team is and who the coach is. He had some additional ordering to do and now that he's kind of got two seasons under his belt, he can breathe a little bit. He's actually finally been able to take a vacation day, which I don't think he's taken all year, which is why he's not here tonight to do this presentation. And we have got the things that we need for the kids. A lot of the times, he's had it for a while, the kids don't come and pick things up from him. And that's been one of the most frustrating things. They just, they forget or they're down there and he maybe walked to the office to get something or what have you. So we are looking for much improvement in this area. And I think coming out of COVID, having more consistent award ceremonies, it's going to be a lot easier to get a handle on that particular topic. You have questions about that or I can, I think it was more of an update for you guys, right?
Well, there, there was a question about the cost for plaques and awards that we, we were just trying to figure out and understand what the, the process was for some students receiving a quote paper or certificate. Is that the right?
Yep.
Certificates versus plaques.
Right.
Versus acknowledgement. I, I think everyone just kind of knows that, as you said, you said it very well. The, the previous person took a lot of information in their brain with them that you can't, it's really difficult to recreate, especially in a pandemic.
Yeah. Yeah. And, and the other thing that added to that was over the years, you'd have certain coaches who coached the team for quite a number of years. They wanted to do their awards a certain way. And so we were very much in the business of different teams had different kinds of awards that looked differently. And what we really need to get to is, and Bob knows this, is a more uniform system that when you play a sport, this is what the award might look like and it's consistent for everybody. It makes it a lot easier in terms of trying to track things and record things and, and have those awards for kids and have them be appropriate so that the kids see them as something to look forward to and work towards. And they don't see it as, how come if he plays that sport or she plays that sport, she gets that and I get this. Why does it have to be different?
And, and the cost.
And the cost.
Sure. Because the, the plaques were obviously significantly more expensive than paper.
Oh, sure.
And so we want to figure out how to, and I'm not implying that we shouldn't. I mean, I feel like sports awards are, all awards are a big deal. I mean,
Yeah.
One of my, I still have on the wall at my house, uh, uh, an award that I won for, for jazz music. To this day, I have that award on my wall. I mean, that's important to me.
Yeah.
And it wasn't real, it's just the context of it.
Sure.
Um, so I think that what the board would like is for Mr. Dawson to do a presentation of what he's planning to do and the cost associated with it before mid-May so that we have an awareness of that because it wasn't included in the budget process. And my understanding, just, just for, for the board is uh, the cost wasn't significant, but I don't have the numbers here. So I'll need Bob to give you the exact numbers, but we're not talking about thousands and thousands.
No, it's, it's about $12 or $13 a plaque.
Yeah. And also the boosters have helped with it traditionally, but in the pandemic, the boosters, it's tricky. Right? So it's just, it's that whole piece about what do we want to pay for? What do we want the program to look like? And then who, who's going to support what parts of it? And we'll work it out. He's working on it.
Yep. Yep. Exactly. Um.
Got a comment?
Yep.
I just, uh, when you talk about streamlining it, I just, my concern, it, maybe it's not so much awards driven, but you, you made a comment that different coaches, they coached for so long, they've done things a certain way. I think as a athlete on that team, you grow for that expectation. And I know one of my biggest things when I was in high school playing field hockey, we knew before every game, we listened to Pat Benatar. We, like, I, I still think of field hockey to this day. So I just, I'm just curious, I, I just would hope that teams are still allowed to kind of have their own individuality of this is what we do because my sister was six years older than me and I knew in elementary school that when you got to play field hockey in high school, this is what you were going to do. And it was such an exciting thing that it made it its own sport.
Right.
So, I mean, I know we're kind of talking about plaques, but I just hope that they're still allowed to.
Yeah.
Really have their own individuality. That's.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, that go, that goes without saying, you know, I, it's got to be a mixture of both, but it's got to be realistic and it's got to be something that if coaches change, you know, the program is still able to sustain and support, you know? Honestly, one of the best sports awards we give that I have loved for the, as long as I've been here are those senior plaques that have a nice picture that Kevin Pillsbury is able to take of every single senior, some kind of an action spot shot of them in their sport. And it's, it's, they're always amazing and the kids see them for the first time at the, at the dinner that's, well, I don't know if it's happening this year or not, but you know what I mean? Like that's, it's, that is a big lasting memory and they all get it as senior athletes. That's constant for everybody. And yet Al Magnuson may have had things that were very unique and special for soccer that kids have looked forward to for years. And that's great too.
Yeah. And I don't know how those whatever Al Magnuson might, I don't know what the costs were or how it came from, but I just want to make sure that those traditions are continued, but.
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah. I, I think that the way I would summarize that, um, is I agree with you completely. And I, and I just wanted to say that what you're talking about is the, the team culture.
Yeah.
Versus the recognition. And what came to light this year was an imbalance, a feeling of imbalance from some parents in recognition. That my child got a piece of paper and so and so got a plaque. Why is that? What I've asked Bob and Brian to do is to figure out how to make the recognition component somewhat consistent, but then maintain, I, I love that you brought that up, the, the, the culture of the different groups.
Right.
Is really important because that's kind of what draws kids to that sport or experience.
Right. Yeah. And unfortunately, like this is not throwing anyone under the bus or anything. Again, he's new in his role. There's, there was a lot of changes coming out of a lot of new coaches. And the, some of the people that did the jobs previously took some of that knowledge with them. And it wasn't, you know, not that it wasn't important to get it back, but when you only have so many hours in the day and it takes you four times as long the schedule of a soccer game than it used to. You know, there's only so much that you can handle. So now that we have a better handle on things, this is something that he's really committed to getting a solid understanding of. So an understanding of isn't the right word. You know what I mean? Just how those moving pieces work.
Great.
The other part of the agenda was his update, correct? Just pull that up. So a different doc, oh, that's the wrong one. So the other document that he had in there was, it's entitled Sanborn Athletics Update, March 18, 2021. And again, I'm not going to read this document in its entirety, but I will summarize by saying that, you know, when we entered into should we or should we not play sports? And I think I was at all the different school board meetings where we talked about this. Everybody felt like we needed to make a go of this. This was important. People felt comfortable that the NHIAA had reasonable expectations for how to handle health and safety. We entrusted Mr. Dawson and our coaches to be able to uphold that. We entrusted our kids to do their part. Kids came, you remember for the winter season and they spoke eloquently. They were ready to do their part. Of course, we did not go without incidents with COVID. However, we do feel very proud of our situation and we do feel as though the issues that we did have, for the most part, were things that were going to happen anyway, just with the nature of the virus. We do not feel as though our athletes conduct, conducted themselves poorly. They were very good, very responsible, overly responsible. Our coaches were fantastic. Honestly, some of the biggest issues that we had came from other schools and other teams that were not doing what they were supposed to do. Mr. Dawson was fantastic about calling other schools out on that when need be. Overall, we, we played, what does he have here? 75 out of our 92 games. Nine were canceled because of the weather. Eight were canceled because of COVID related issues, which is simply fantastic. He is recommending a full go for spring sports, obviously following NHIAA guidelines, which again, just like we're dealing with, with the schools, as things evolve, those rules will evolve. Same thing for middle school. And so I don't know if you want to talk about that before we talk about the field use piece, or if you want me to just talk about all of it at once and you can discuss it at once. It's up to you.
That would be up to the madam chair.
I'm open to hearing what members would like to hear, how they would like to hear it.
Jumping on this right now.
Okay, great. All right. Let's take it one more time.
So a lot of information here on, uh, on the, the winter sports. So that was, uh, it was a pretty tough call. We were into, uh, a very difficult situation and I think we made the right call. We trusted the students to live to their part. They said they'd do it. They did it. They delivered. They played well. They, 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 they won awards. They, they, it was a successful season. Uh, and we were able to pull that off. And I would be, um, I'm thankful to the students for, for doing everything they did to make this happen. And I'm fully in support of a full go for spring.
We almost put a couple banners on the wall this year, which is fantastic. That boys' best basketball game, uh, should have won that game.
But Dylan Kowal, that is, he hit his thousand points.
Did hit his thousand points. Yeah. And, and we're going to hold, so there are actually, at the next meeting, Bob would like to come back. He's going to have some individual student awards that he would like to present. We've had a couple of interesting ones and I was told I am not allowed to steal his thunder on that. So I'm saying nothing. That was like his one thing. He's like, you do not do this. Okay.
Okay. So do we need a, we need a vote? We need a, a motion to, for the full go or?
I, I think, I think, um, the, the board should vote to move forward with spring sports as suggested by Mr. Dawson. But if you'd like to wait until 8.3, there's a facilities usage proposal as well. We could do them separately. It's kind of all similar. So it's, it's up to the board. If you want to, Brian, would you like a, a motion for?
Really two separate.
Yeah, let's do the, yeah.
I would rather the separate things.
I was saying.
They are separate.
Yeah, I agree. Yep.
I'll make a motion. I make a motion to accept, uh, Mr. Dawson's recommendation for a full go for spring sports.
I second.
Somebody button beat me.
So do you want to use the language as he wrote it in there? It says, full go for spring sports with universal masking in place until NHIAA and TSA middle school leagues protocols are available?
Yes, I just shorthanded it.
I'm thinking for Phyllis.
As read by Brian.
Okay. For the rec, for the record for Phyllis.
All right. Any discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Unanimous. Great. All right. So now we are on to the field usage.
Yeah. So we are, as you might expect, starting to get asks from folks about using our facilities again. And I think we're trying to take this in pieces right now. We are not, at this point, looking to entertain inside groups in the auditorium and spaces such as that. But we would like to get some outside groups using our spaces. So Mr. Dawson's got three things here that he's asking for tonight. The first being use of the Sanborn fields. That would include Chase and the high school, depending on scheduling, um, of our schedules for Sanborn youth. So at Chase, teams would use the restroom facilities as a courtesy and they maintain them, which they always have. These are programs that, this particular program, this supports Fremont, Newton and Kingston students primarily. So um, we'd like to do that. The second, um, there's going to be, this one is actually, he's kind of putting you on notice to be coming later. Discussion around a summer high school basketball league. Thinking about what that would look like. So you're not being asked to take any action on that. Just be aware that it could be coming to you. There is already, you probably have already seen it. Um, a summer camp being offered as part of our summer enrichment program. That is not a competitive league. What you'd be getting a proposal for soon might be doing some kind of a competitive league. The other thing that, um, he's looking for a yes for, and I, I do hope this is something that you could see supporting is allowing Reach the Beach to use our campus. So as you know, we've been doing Reach the Beach for at, at least 10 years, maybe a little bit longer than that. Um, this would happen in September and they would be using the bakery and the high school spots. And having talked with the Reach the Beach people at this point, they're not looking to use any indoor facilities whatsoever, completely outside the parking lot areas. They bring in porta potties. Possibly, we could look at the concession stand, but I don't even think, um, concession stand right now for their folks. It's a huge fundraiser for our athletic boosters. I mean, it really is primary, their primary funding source. In, in non-COVID years, we'd be renting showers and that sort of thing. So we would like to see that be able to happen. We would be very concerned that if we were to say no, that rate, that route would be rerouted and we may never have it back. So.
Reach the Beach is?
Reach the Beach? Yeah. Yeah. It's a, it's a, it's one of the biggest races in New Hampshire and you have teams of runners that sign up and they kind of run down through the state of New Hampshire, making their way to the beach. And we are pri, this is pretty much the last stop, the last big stop before they make the final push to the beach. So people, you know, I, I have friends in, from high school and other places that are living in different parts of the state. And they said the one year, time of the year they're come out to Sanborn is because they're here for Reach the Beach and that's their connection.
On a Saturday?
Yep. Saturday, September 19.
They run from here down 111. I mean, we've all seen.
They start up in the White Mountains. I'm.
They do. Yeah.
And they end up at the.
We all seen them on Saturday running.
Pete, we're going to, we're going to form a team, Pete.
I don't even know.
Yeah.
You and I, we're going to form a team this year. What do you say?
That's impressive.
He's ignoring me. He's like.
You can run, I'll ride the bicycle.
Okay. So yeah, if you, again, if you're, if you're willing to take at least, I guess it's items number one and three on his list. You could either take them separately or together. I don't, I, I, I don't know that that matters.
Why don't we take them separately? That way, everybody can have, we can talk about them. Um, okay. So the first one is to approve by Sanborn youth only at, um, any discussion?
Move, move to approve? Did you just move it?
Um, yes.
Oh, I'll second that. It's, it looks like it's Sanborn youth soccer and baseball and softball. Those are two different, two different organizations.
And it looks like they want to use the old middle school too for softball. Okay.
Yeah. And again, like I said, what, where they're located will depend on what our scheduling needs are going to be, which depending on the day of the week may shift a little bit, but Bob will, Mr. Dawson will work with them on the scheduling so that they're always in the know.
All right. So any discussion? Did you get a second?
Oh, I'll second if you didn't get one.
Yeah, you did.
Yeah, I think we did. I meant to move it, but it's okay. Second. Uh, okay. Uh, all in favor?
Yeah. So just for clarification, we're talking about, these are our students.
Yeah.
Right? I mean, these, these are Sanborn students.
Well, there may, there may be some students who go to, you know, private schools or whatnot, but they're, they're our kids. They live in our community.
Game, yeah.
Which is our kids? The Reach the Beach or the?
No, no, no. The, the.
Soccer, baseball.
It do include some, a lot of Fremont kids too. That's good.
Yeah.
So I mean, in my mind, if these are our kids, we, we should be approved.
I will say, when my son plays Plastow baseball and we play against Sanborn, I generally wear my Sanborn gear even.
Oh, that's, that's.
Sanborn spirit.
There's like. You know, I try to.
Can do it, but saying it, Mr. Stack. I don't know.
I always used to go, if Sanborn's winning, you sit on Sanborn's side.
You make them walk home if he, if he wins?
Sometimes.
Shirt and a hat, but they were different.
All right. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? Okay. Let's move on to Reach the Beach. Someone like to make a motion on that one?
I'd make a motion to allow them to use the facilities for Reach the Beach.
I'll second that.
The outdoor facilities.
Yes. Thank you, Jim.
As requested by Mr. Dawson. Any discussion? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Unanimous? Okay.
Done with me now?
I don't know. Ask them.
I feel like I'm monopolizing.
Yeah, that's the outside.
It's all right.
Right. Correct. That was.
I think we're good.
All right.
We're good. Thank you, Mr. Stack.
Okay, great.
One question though, did I miss number four in terms of whether you need a decision on that or?
There is no, I think he, he already, um, denied the request for number four.
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry. I didn't even bring that up. Yeah. He's not, although it would be cool. We're not, we're not there yet.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. So on to, uh, school board calendar for 21.
The school board calendar reflects the, uh, the board meetings in a, a almost identical manner as the way we've done them the last few years. There's only one month that got a little strange, which is March, right? March always has the deliberative, the voting, and then we have a meeting. Um, so we set it up the same as this year for next year, that there'll be a meeting on the 16th, which is our organizational meeting. I did check to see when St. Patrick's Day for certain members. And, uh, and then, and then, uh, made.
It's a holy day, don't you?
I do understand. I do have to admit, if we had a best mask evening, you and I would be tied, but I would give it to you. Respect for St. Patrick's Day. Um, I, I think that, uh, you know, like in any other year, you can, if you need to add a meeting or take one away, we can always do that, but it's pretty similar. Oh, and for those of you who are new, we, we usually meet the first, you probably know this already. We usually meet the first and third Wednesday. But I'm a Maine resident and my little guys are on vacation, the, an off week for February and April. So I asked the board to meet the first and second Wednesday of those two months so that we could still have two meetings, but I can go away with my kids. So I, I really want the New Hampshire vacation because it's way cheaper flights wise. But my wife's a teacher in Maine, so I have no luck on that one.
So just to clarify this, because this is unusual. There's only one board meeting scheduled for March, next March. That is unusual. We have typically had two.
Yes, what happened was.
I see because of the
Yep.
Spring, whatever, our February vacation is really sort of a March vacation.
Yes, that's. Yes, that's it. That, it was a, it's a, it's really weird. It happens once every seven years. Thank you for, I didn't really clarify that very well, so I appreciate that. In March, the, the vacation for February this year, because New Hampshire does the week after, so there's a holiday, uh, it's President's Day in February. New Hampshire does their vacation the week after so that folks can travel off cycle with Massachusetts and Maine, which saves a tremendous amount of money for, um, flights and travel, as you all know as parents, right? So the problem is, once every seven years or so, the vacation ends up the first week of March because of the way that President's Day cycles out with a leap year and all that. So that made it really hard to get two meetings in, in March unless we did them um, two weeks in a row or three weeks in a row. So for example, if we have a meeting on March 16th and the 23rd, we have two weeks in a row. And then we would have, uh, a, a meeting on the 6th and the 13th. Typically during this month, we're going through this process of choosing um, a new chair, new members, getting everything set up. And Phyllis and I wanted to discuss this with you. I, you can do it either way, but I, do I think that you need to have two meetings in March personally? Probably not. But if you want to have two, we can always schedule two and we can skip one or do whatever we want to do, or have them both depending on what's happening with business. But typically, March is not a high business month for subcommittees and things like that. It's up to you. This is a weird year. Normally, we'd have a meeting the first week and the, and the third week of March. We decided to put it where it is to kind of make sure that we could get the board formed and get everything up and running for April. That was the intent of putting it where it is. So it works with the vacation and the, uh, um, the voting. That was the purpose of that date.
So the 23rd and the 30th are both open in the calendar, is that right?
They are. And if you have a meeting on the 30th, you're going to have three weeks in a row with board meetings.
Right.
Look at April. You want to think about April. That was the part we struggled with.
Right. So if you just leave it open.
Yep.
If we had to have a meeting, we could have one.
Absolutely, yeah. And goodness knows, last March, we needed a meeting.
My concern would be more, there's going to be, right, and currently there are five weeks between February, our February 9th meeting and our next meeting on March 16th. That's a pretty long time to, that's a fairly long time to go. Like if, why can't we meet one of those, one of those Wednesdays in February? You're not off on both of them.
Yeah, one is school vacation week. We, we aren't going to meet on that.
Vacation week is the first week of March, right? In blue, isn't that?
Right, but what?
And what's in blue here?
Uh, it's up to you as a board.
Like February 16th and February 20th.
I see, I see what Tammy's saying. We could meet technically on the 23rd.
No, that's the week that I'm away.
Oh, that's the week that you're away.
Yeah. You could meet, if you want to meet three weeks in a row on 2, 9 and 16, you can, you can meet. I, I just don't know that we're going to have enough business to warrant three weeks in a row of board meetings.
Should meet on the 2nd and the 16th of February. That would be my suggestion.
Yeah.
You can, you can schedule zero meetings next year and the chair can say, we're going to have a meeting on this day. We're going to have a meeting. So I, you don't really necessarily have to decide now. You know, you can see how full your basket is and then the chair can say, hey, listen, guys, we got to have a meeting, such and such. But to maybe, I mean, I may not be here, right? To write it in concrete now, you know, I, 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 my suggestion was be, because there's so much confusion and it's a year away, why don't you hold off on that decision and then see how full your basket is? And then if the chair wants to say, uh, we'll have a meeting, we'll have a meeting. You don't want to have a meeting for no reason. If, if Tom, you know, I'm going to use Tom's example as, as right, you know, that it's kind of a week me, month anyway. Anyway, whatever you want.
You know, I have to say that Tam, I'm sorry, Tammy makes a really good point that I did not catch, which is that in February, because of the way that, that, because it's the weird year, Tammy, you could have a meeting actually for the first time since I've been here and have it work if we met on February 2nd, 16th, because then my kids are off the week of the 21st, right? And then the next week, our vacation happens. And then we, we don't want a meeting on the 9th because that's the voting week.
Right, that's.
Right? Then we could meet on the 16th. And then we don't go five weeks. So great, great catch on that. And then if we need a meeting on the 23rd or the 30th for some business or something, that they're open, right? Because we keep, just for those of you who are new and for the community, myself and the administration team typically keep every Wednesday open for anything that comes up, right? So we, we know, like, we know that we meet the first and third Wednesday. But in general, I've instructed the administrators to always be available on a Wednesday night in case something comes up. That's kind of like a, 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 a marker in the calendar, because we all have children and things to schedule, doctor's appointments, clubs, this, that and the other. My wife knows that Wednesday nights are like sacred, right? So I, I think it's good not to, I think we actually should adjust the calendar. My, my recommendation after considering this would be to make February the 2nd and the 16th and then meet on the 16th of March and then do the 23rd and 30th as needed. That, that's what I would recommend at this point. Thanks for catching that, Tammy.
I would move that.
Yes.
Second, Matt. All right, discussion?
Discussion? All right, all in favor?
Yep. Yeah, we're not going to meet March 2nd. It's, it's February 2nd and 16th and March 16th.
Just ta, moving the 9th to the 16th of February.
Great idea.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Right, unanimous?
Uh, we need a motion to approve the entire calendar too. The, the entire board meeting calendar.
Okay.
Sorry, I should have rolled that in. I didn't think of it.
That's all right.
I moved to approve the calendar as presented, uh, with the, with the modification.
Second.
All right, any discussion?
Tammy did it.
Yep, more?
Um, I, I just want the early release days. Sorry, realize I'm late to the game on this, but, um, is there something still in the work for next year to try to do something? Are we budgeting money for a program for children after? Is that still being worked on in the work or whatnot?
Yes, that is, yes. I'll give an update on that in April or May.
Okay.
Okay. All right. All right, all in favor? All right, unanimous?
And just for the, the public to understand, what the board just voted on is the school board meeting dates.
Yes.
Not the calendar.
Oh.
So I just want to make sure.
I thought we were voting on.
No, the whole calendar's already been passed.
Okay, definitely.
Yeah.
Okay.
This is the school board meeting dates.
Gotcha.
For next year.
Okay.
Which again, are set for the Wednesdays that we just voted on, but any Wednesday could turn into a board meeting night based on need.
Or Friday or.
Or Saturday morning or Monday night this year has been a big one. I mean.
Uh, all right, uh, BAKI boiler update.
Thanks. Matt, as you know, is not here this evening. He's not feeling well. I, I did, uh, so here's the gist. The BAKI boiler, as everyone knows, was weeping, which is a fancy boiler techno term for cracked. And so water's coming out of the boiler. One boiler failed. We thought that we could get by with the second boiler. I think the board, but this is more for public understanding, um, both boilers failed last Friday. Completely. So we tried to run them in tandem to kind of get by. And, uh, one, one, after they turned on the second one to try to get just enough out of both to make it work, the second one completely failed. So Matt has, I, I just want to say that, that, uh, Mr. Angel and Dan Doyle worked tirelessly all weekend to get the, um, vaccination clinic set up and simultaneously bring in a remote boiler for BAKI, hook it up and get it running so that school ran on Monday. Thank you to them. They are, Matt has expedited the process of working with the, the folks to, we, we need to buy a new boiler for BAKI and, and, um, Matt is working very hard with the engineer that the board approved to hire to develop a system for BAKI and he hopes to have something to the board, um, by May so that we can have a plan and start the process of running it. Matt is also, uh, pursuing the insurance company for coverage for the, for the, um, for the, I'm not sure his technical terms, but the, the boiler that's kind of outside the building and running. I don't know if you've seen the, I shared pictures on Facebook so people wouldn't get anxious. Um, you know, it's kind of cool, but it's kind of odd looking too, right? Like it's a trailer truck. Yeah, it's not what I expected at all. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So that's pretty much the update at this point. And I, I don't know if facilities or finance has any additional information to share in light of Matt not being here, but essentially we're moving forward as quickly as possible.
Yeah, that, that would be my only concern. May is a long way away, but we're, the, the, the need for heat is going to be dissipating fairly quickly also.
Well, and, and I think that, that for those of you who are new on the board this evening, I know you've probably watched the other meetings. Matt and I have a, a, a strong philosophy, as do you folks that have been here on the facilities committee. We'd rather fix it once and do it right. We are not, it, we, I don't like Band-Aid fixing. I prefer to do it right, right? We, we, the Swayze gym had a problem. We replaced the roof. It's done. If you have to Band-Aid something a little bit and it, it, it's that balance, right? Sometimes it's okay to fix it. These boilers are 30 years old. They have definitely served us well for their cost.
You end up spending more money in the long run if you just.
Yeah, yeah, I've learned a lot about boilers this month. It's really interesting. So that's pretty much it.
All right. Second public comment, but there is no one here, so we will move on. Um, other business. Phyllis, I noticed that there is a, should I read this? Okay. Says, "Thank you, thank you, thank you. From my heart to yours. Thank you very much for all you have done and for the etched glass vase, Larry Heath." All right, um, next agenda. Uh, if anyone has anything they would like to add to the next agenda, uh, you can send that to Tom and I.
Can I just ask a question? It's really, in a sense, not the next agenda, but I want to. I've been given some thought about the Public Relations Committee. The Carriagertown News is like three pages now. And I've always been concerned that if we make a decision today, it can't even be put in until, because we meet actually the day after, it's due in. And we have the essential news and the superintendent's reports. I wonder if we, do we really need a committee or do we need, when an issue comes up that we want publicized, that we appoint someone to do it? Because I, I'm not, I mean, it's, it's, I, I'm playing this mind game with myself, but I want to pass it on to you and see what you think. Nothing we have to decide tonight, but where we meet the day after is due. We can't even put something in until by next Tuesday for next week. I mean, it's just, it, it's, it's a mess. So something to think about, I, I don't know. I've never been on the Public Relations Committee. Maybe I'm out in law last.
Yes, you were.
I just want to pass it on and have somebody think about it, maybe put on the agenda to discuss it.
Yes, you were. You were on the Public Relations Committee.
That's right, too, I was, yes.
A couple of years ago.
Many, many years ago.
A couple, anyway.
To give you an idea how important.
Um, I have, I, I just want to comment. The Public Relations Committee doesn't meet, uh, well, meets on Wednesdays.
Yeah.
The deadline for the Carriagertown News is Thursday noon, so there would.
Tuesdays, didn't they?
No, it's Thursday.
No, it's Thursday.
Is it Thursday? Oh, well, okay.
Technically, there's still would be time.
Friends tonight.
I think it's important to have a.
Change?
I think it's important. I think it, I think it's important to have a committee that is devoted to relations with the community. That's the only committee that has that mission and that role. Um, and I, I just think it would, I just, if I were in the community and the board decided to dissolve the Public Relations Committee, I just wouldn't take that very well. I think it's important. I mean.
Well, it's just that we have so many other ways that we do put it out.
You're, you're absolutely right that it's gotten very difficult to get, to, you know, to get messages out because the Carriagertown News is just shrinking, unfortunately. Um, and with COVID, it's been really hard. Word of mouth is just not worked very well this year, right? But I would speak in favor of the Public Relations Committee.
I, I, I would just say this. I like knowing which three board members I'm supposed to go to and when, I almost said something not so good. Um, things get exciting on Facebook at nine o'clock at night. Last night I contacted Tammy and Dawn who are on Public Relations and I said,
Relations, but.
Well, oh, you're not, sorry. I, I, I think, always think she is because she's the parent that's gotten all the heat. Welcome to the party.
Welcome to sharing.
Yeah, yeah. So I just think that it's important to note that I do reach out to board members at times, particularly Tammy, around Facebook issues to make decisions. So for example, yesterday when the graduation, the prom piece kind of exploded. I texted Tammy and said, hey, I'm kind of thinking I need to respond quickly because it might make this better, but it also might make it worse. What do you think? And we conferred and it did, it, I mean, the kids are frustrated and some parents were frustrated, but it did help that I said, hey, wait a minute, the board hasn't even met on this. It's not fair to you guys and it's not fair to the community to be misled accidentally. I don't think the kids meant anything by it. They're just trying to get, they don't know what we decide and what the CDC decides or the state, right? They don't understand that. They just know that we're the adults shepherding the system. So that was an example of where knowing who I should go to is helpful. Um, I do think that it's kind of tricky in the sense that sometimes I have to respond really fast. And one role I've taken on is kind of the PR person on Facebook for the district, just, it's fine. Sometimes it's exhausting, but sometimes I also feel like it's good for people to hear directly from me. Because it's me, right? And it, like, Phyllis helps me with those newsletters that go out on Fridays, the, 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 um, constant contacts, that's, Phyllis helps me with that and Patty. You know, Diana Rooney chimes in sometimes. We, we do have a little bit more of a team effort, whereas when I first started, I was writing the constant contacts and physically sending them out myself, which is fine, because I, I like to be in touch with people. So I, I think that the, the, the question is, one thing that is really important is the, uh, um, communication around a major vote. So this year, the group helped more. Larry and Charlie and, um, uh, uh, Tammy helped me with the vote on the teacher's contract. And that letter that we wrote that went out there, and that really made a difference. So Pete, I would actually say that this year of all years, it's been helpful.
No, I, I, like I say, I just, I just want to throw it out there, but.
Thanks.
It's not anything like, I don't think we, it's like.
Oh, you're the chair now. You just made yourself. I was trying to think of, you know, if Dawn ever asked me a question about committees, you just got the gig.
I'm not on that committee, but I vote for Peter.
I think it's a unanimous vote.
See.
You guys are going to miss me.
Taught me how to do this. I wasn't like this when I got here.
Pete, you have a whole year.
Taught me how to be, you know, a little fresh.
I do have to say, as a parent, though, I felt like the stuff that Tammy would put on was very helpful. It would give us good information, you know, the constant contact. So I do think Public Relations, I would agree with Tammy, is very important. Not all the parents ha, have the time to watch the videos of the school board meetings, but Tammy would give updated information based on what happened from the meetings.
Yep. Good. Well, the nice thing is that committee has some openings and it'd be great to have some parents help with the committee.
I'm the only one on it tomorrow.
Right, right, right now Tammy's the only one who's technically still here, so.
Stay on it, you can, you can.
What is it that you said?
Anybody else wants to?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, Peach has volunteered, so.
Get along. Boy, this is what a long way from.
I know, it's, I know, Pete, I know. It is very positive. Thank you, everyone.
All right, so, um, again, next agenda. Anybody want, um, put anything on the next agenda? Let us know what's the.
Yeah, um, if you could, just for the public and for folks, uh, new to the board, if you could, um, if you could send me agenda items by noon or, or by Wednesday at noon. I usually have the agenda figured out with Phyllis by Thursday. Do, no, the week before Thursday. So if it's, if the meeting is on the first, the week before that, um, send us by noon any agenda items that you want, because what happens is we create the agenda and then I usually confer with the chair and talk about the agenda and what items are going to go on or not go on. And then we send it to you on Friday. Right, so.
So tomorrow, if we want something, we should send it to you tomorrow by noon?
No.
No.
Or, or.
We've, we've got. The week before the, yeah, so April 7th.
Right.
Right, a week before April 7th.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. All right, I don't know of any announcements?
Nope, we're good. You get to bang the gap, you, you gotta.
Hold, I have to read this part. I have to say, the next Sanborn Regional School Board Meeting will be held on Wednesday, April 7th, 2021. PM in the library at Sanborn Regional High School. For remote viewing, please see the link in the SAU 17 website. And since there is no non-public, we are going to adjourn.
Wow, wee.